To it since we uploaded previous and the same thing for action item F. The item itself is the same, but we did update the salary schedule. So that's a new document. So when you get to those action items, you won't be approving the one that came on Friday. You'll be approving the one that's uploaded as number two.
And we'll get to those during the budget discussion.
Mr. Chair, I would move we adopt the amended budget or amended agenda.
Same thing in this case.
Second.
Second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none will adopt the amended agenda. Man, I had a heck of a time getting that up.
I rubbed up on you, sorry.
And the consent agenda tonight is to approve the minutes of the June twenty fourth meeting and to consider payment of bills, including late pays, preauthorization of payroll, utilities, officials, and automatic payments.
Mr. Chair, I would move that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none will adopt the consent agenda. I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn regular meeting for the purpose of conducting a public hearing for the budget and intent to levy mills.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, they were adjourned from the regular meeting and we're now going to conduct a public hearing on intent to levy mills and review the budget. Colton? Let's have it.
All right, so tonight I'll be presenting the fiscal year twenty five, twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six budget. We'll begin by reviewing how we ended the fiscal year twenty twenty five first, and I'm hoping that will provide some context as we move into the proposal of the fiscal year twenty twenty six budget. We're going to start off with some, some concerns that we kind of have or some things that we have to keep in mind. Our ADM did decrease by ninety two, by ninety two students. Recalibration impacts, we, we're just not sure what's, what's going to happen there yet. And then, as you all may have heard, that we may lose some Title II and Title V funding from the government. We're not sure when we can answer it, if we're going to receive it or not. So we've planned in this budget of not having that just in case. So this next slide is kind of, is where we've ended the fiscal year twenty twenty five. So this is broken down by the general fund, food service, and Aspen daycare, and they're listed on the far left column for the revenue expenditure for those items. So we've budgeted to, to receive about forty six million eight hundred and fifty seven thousand, and we've budgeted to spend forty six million five hundred and sixty eight thousand. And you can see where in the, in the second column, on the year-to-date column, where we've received forty seven million eighty three thousand. So we've received a little bit more than we budgeted for. And we spent forty four million four hundred and seventy nine thousand, which was pretty significantly under what we thought we were going to spend. And I will get to that in later slides of, of what happened, why we thankfully spent less than what we thought we were going to. But you can see in those blue columns of how much we are planning to put in reserves just in the general fund, considering the general fund, and the seven hundred and forty one thousand in the previous years, how much we put into reserves last year. And the only reason we were able to do that last year is because we were able to withdraw indirect costs from ESER, or we, or we would have had to tap into reserves. And the, the, the green amounts are considering after food service at Aspen. So the two million four hundred and fifty two thousand is how much we think we're going to put in reserves this year. And again, I'll, I'll, there is some pretty big reasons why, and so I'll get to those in the, in later slides. Are there any questions on this slide before I, I know there's kind of a lot here.
No.
Good there.
So you do mean this budget, not this year?
So yep, in the fiscal, so this is the fiscal year, yep, this is the fiscal year twenty twenty five budget where we ended up.
And the twenty six.
Yeah, so yeah, this is where we ended up as of right now, and we haven't even talked about what we're planning for next year.
Okay.
Yep, that's correct.
Thank you.
And so these are our budgets by department. As you can kind of just quickly look at it, you can see in all in the green are the, the items that we underspent on, that we are under budget on. And then I would, I'll just kind of highlight a couple of the, the big things. So as you can see in, in maintenance, we overspent by fifty five thousand three hundred and fifty three dollars. That's a little bit misleading because we have some building repairs on, for the middle school fire. We did receive proceeds for that, and the auditors had me deposit it in a revenue account, so it wasn't offsetting those expenses. So those were expenses for the middle school for additional to the budget. The sped nurses overspent twenty thousand five hundred with recalibration. There were some items that we didn't, with Katrina being new and me being new, we didn't really know there were, there was things that we needed. And there was just some really outdated equipment that once she got in, there was like, we need to update this. And when we made those decisions, we kind of already knew that sped was going to be significantly under budget, so we are comfortable with that. The next item, Riverton Aquatic Center, overspent by ten thousand dollars. There was just some building, or there was just some repairs and maintenance items that we didn't really know that were going to happen. And then the big item that I want to highlight is right underneath that is the, the special education reimbursable. We underspent on that by one point two million. That was largely due to transitioning some of the out of, out of district placements back to our schools. And as you all, all are aware, that we are being monitored by the state for this, and that was kind of the main reason why. But you can also see in some of the other budget items that we were just, we were under budget by a lot. Transportation, we didn't have a lot of repairs and utilities. We, even the increase that we had, we had a really good winner. And so stuff like that. So as you can see in all of these, these bigger increases, when we did do the twenty twenty six budget, we really wanted to focus on allocating some of these stuff to wages. And so we really did tighten the, the budgets on a lot of these items. We didn't want that extra room in there because we thought that they were kind of taken away from possibly being able to put to wages in frozen steps. So the next budgets for next year are going to be less on most of those items. The next one is, so these, this is where we're on the budget by our schools. Activities, we're over budget by fifteen thousand, but that's a big improvement. Last year, we were over by approximately seventy thousand. So they did a really, they did a really good job there. We also, a couple of our sports teams didn't make it to state, so that did help. But I did feel like Mark and Reggie did a good job trying to limit expenses. I also did some changes of, like, for mills that, for mills that the, the district is paying for, that water only, that kind of stuff. I mean, some, some changes there that I think helped. The next one down in the negative is the, the vocational, we overspent there. As you know, the state has kind of criticized districts for under utilizing CTE funds, so I wanted to point out that we did use our CTE funds. So we're good there, we're not one of those schools that are doing that. We did find out when we were doing activities budget that some of those vocational stuff that we were spending were actually being spent out of the activities budget. And so we're like, those are actually CTE stuff. So that also saved us some costs in activities by just moving it down to some T, some CTE expenses. And then Willow was overspent by five thousand. I'll work with the new principal on that of, of budgeting for that a little better.
Question. Do we have a systemic issue of stuff getting spent out of the wrong budgets or being charged for the wrong budgets?
Not really. I mean, I, I think in prior years, we did a pretty good job staying consistent. I just think it was one of those items where we were not really aware that those could have been CTE, but the state had focus on, hey, you must spend this on CTE. So we put more focus on what is actually qualified for CTE funding.
And historically, we have had some shifts in this year. We've, one year, we put it out of this budget code, another year, we put it out of this budget code, and we haven't had a lot of consistency. But this year, we really focused on, and Colton really focused on, he's checking. And so when a requisition comes through, he's checking the budget code and making sure that it is appropriately assigned based on the WDE manual. So we made a lot of progress in that this year.
And it's kind of a matter of just, we didn't know as opposed to we're, you know, we're just not paying attention?
A little bit of both. A lot of it is the WDE manual changes, and I think that people weren't aware that the manual changed, and it, this is how we've always, you know, coded it, so we just kept doing that. Plus, we're, we're trying to simplify the budgets by putting, you know, here is your budget, and these are the numbers that belong to your budget, and here's what kinds of things you put in it, so that we have a, a cheat sheet per se. Don't you have TIP working on that?
We, we are creating cheat sheets for the secretaries this year, so we can be more consistent on funding. And also, we, we had a couple new secretaries this last year that they were just kind of, you know, put in the fire, so to speak, and now we're have a cheat sheet. So if we do get a new one, that they're just not kind of just guessing on where to put it. So that will help consistency as well, we hope.
Now they have an educational reference as to where that funding will go, and that will help that become more consistent then.
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
Just a question about, in discussions with other boards and about CTE and middle school, they had some issues that they were using CTE money in middle school that was not appropriate. Did we have anything like that happen?
No, I don't believe so.
No, so our CTE is covered out of just our normal funding. We don't, we haven't been using that CTE allocation, which now they're going to separate out. We just use the allocation that we give to the middle school as a whole, so it won't impact us.
Okay. Good, thank you.
Good.
All right, on to the, the next slide. So this is what we're proposing here. Now, this changed a little bit after we, we talked to the, the board chair and the vice board chair a couple of days ago. This includes some of those changes we made, and I'll get into some of those decisions that we made. So our foundation guarantee is thirty three million five hundred thousand. That's the one hundred A that I do. It is a little bit of an increase from last year, even with the ADM decrease because of the ECAs and the bump that they gave for, for wages and stuff like that. Regular day reporting from Fremont thirty eight, about the same as last year, seven hundred and fifteen thousand. Impact aid, the students in Fremont twenty five, one hundred and eighty five thousand. And sped reimbursable, the eleven million three hundred and twenty eight thousand, that's what we spent this last year. And then other county resources that we receive, one point eight million. And the non-labor, in the non-labor budget, we're proposing eight, eight million four hundred thousand. That in, that does include a seventeen hundred dollar increase to the teacher base. It also includes, oh, sorry. I said that wrong. In the non-labor budget, we already went through that. In the labor budget is thirty seven million, that does include the, the eighteen hundred for the teacher base increase and transportation increase as well. And I will get into those reasons why we felt like that was necessary. There's also food service transfer of two hundred thousand and a daycare transfer of, sorry, food service transfer a hundred thousand, daycare transfer of, man, food service of, food service of two hundred thousand, daycare transfer a hundred thousand, and depreciation reserves of two hundred and fifty thousand, and then also frozen steps of three hundred and twenty five thousand. We put a little bit of cushion in there just in case there was some frozen steps that we, that we missed. So even with that said, we felt like we're, we could put in reserves one point one million dollars, but with the Title II and Title V costs, it, if we do have to assume those, it's going to be six hundred and nine thousand. We feel like with the amount that we put into reserves last year, and with that amount, we feel like the increase to the teacher base and the transportation wages that we're proposing, we feel like that is sustainable. When we originally met with the board chair, we had a thousand dollar increase to the base, which we admittedly were maybe being conservative because we didn't know what the costs or what was going to happen next year with the recalibration.
Right.
So these are our appropriations that you guys have seen approved. The general fund is forty seven million three hundred and seventy five thousand. The, and then we, we did split out, this is kind of the new thing, we did split out what we're planning to spend on, on, out of our reserves. And I have another slide of, of our plan for this last reserves that we do have. Food service was one point two million, about the same. Student activities, we did spend less, so I plan on spending a little less. Insurance, ten million, about the same. There is an insurance increase this last year, so it's going to be a little bit more. Capital construction is three hundred and fifty two thousand, and it's down pretty significantly, and all that was because of the auditorium. The only reason there is three hundred and fifty two thousand is because some of that cost from the auditorium is rolling into this year that we're paying in, in July, hopefully in July. The component fund is going to be the same, three point nine, that is the Rond vu and Jackson sewers. We're not sure if that's going to happen this year, but we wanted to have that listed just in case it does. The depreciation reserves is two point two million. We don't plan, really plan on spending that, but I listed that because that's what we've always done, and I wanted to be consistent with us just keeping it in there just in case. The major maintenance is three million. We're planning on the roof for Central, which I think is in the, is later in the agenda. And also, we're in the early stages of the bleachers and the gym. Special revenue is six point nine million, and it's down pretty significantly from twelve million that we received, and that's all because of, there was some ESER still in this last year. Daycare, we're planning on having to transfer a hundred and seventy thousand. And then the flexible insurance is the health equity, the flexible spending account that we have to, we have to upfront the cost for our flexible spending accounts, and then health equity reimburses us as they with, as they take stuff from the employees' checks. Did you have a question?
Is the daycare transfer a hundred thousand or a hundred and seventy?
Oh, sorry, yep, you're, it should be a hundred, it should be a hundred and seventy, you're right.
Should be one seventy?
Yep.
Sorry, I just.
No, you're good. And then the, the tend to levy the mills is two hundred and ten million, two hundred and eighteen thousand. These are the plans for the reserves. So two point four million is how much we are going to put in reserves. Band uniforms, a hundred thousand, we really feel like those are outdated and old, they haven't been replaced in over twenty years, so we do want to put a focus on that. The, we do have one rear engine bus, two hundred and thirty four thousand, that is going to be reimbursable for us over five years. Two gasoline buses, four hundred and thirty nine thousand, that will also be reimbursed for us over five years. And then the turf depreciation reserves, two hundred and five thousand. And that would complete us from what we think the turf's going to cost us in twenty, twenty twenty eight, twenty twenty nine. So even then, we plan on saving one point four million in reserves. And like I said, most of that is going to be reimbursable to us.
So the turf fund will be caught back up?
Yes.
More than caught back up. It'll be a hundred percent of what we expect to have to pay in twenty twenty eight, twenty nine.
So the next we put in will be a head.
Yeah, as, as we get a little closer, we, we may do some more codes just in case inflation and add some more, and but that will get us pretty close.
Are we getting too close to having too much in reserve or a limit can be our cap?
So our limit, because of COVID and, and all that stuff, the, the, the limit was thirty percent. It's supposed to end this next year to fifteen percent. After this last year, we were at about like seventeen percent. So even this year, we would be more than that, that we would have to get down. But that is one of the things that the business managers are trying to fight for in this recalibration is to maintain the thirty percent or at least twenty five percent. So I feel comfortable in that fifteen to twenty percent range, just to, to see what the state decides.
So since we're doing the public's part of it, in their part, asking questions, I'll continue that process. So daycare, tell me about daycare.
So, do you want me to explain? So daycare is something that we provide for our staff. It is, we do receive some, we do receive some income for that, but we do know that it is going to cost the, the district some, that it isn't going to be profitable, and it proved to be that this last year. I could move to that front slide.
Do they pay for any of it, or is it just a perk?
So we charge six hundred a month.
Which is comparable to?
Which is comparable to a little bit less than, and we do not require them to pay over the summer months. And so many of the daycares in town, regardless of whether your child is there or not, you have to pay over the summer month. So it's a benefit to our, our staff with young families. It does end up costing the district because we do pay lower wages for those positions than we, than our other positions, but we still have to provide benefits. And that's how the other daycares are able to get by, is their benefit package is not what our benefit package is.
Just, just wanted to clarify that. The next thing is, with previous bus purchases, where are we in, are, are they all reimbursed from previous?
No, so we still have some buses that were in twenty twenty one, this will be the last year, then twenty twenty two, we still have another year, according to our funding model, that we're still receiving some of those stuff. I believe when I looked, it was approximately like between a hundred and forty thousand and a hundred and eighty thousand a year that we're receiving for that.
Thank you.
And I didn't get this number to Colton early enough, but we also, for the DARA, will be re, will be reimbursed the fifty two thousand dollars for the one bus that we have to dispose of the engine. So, and that's a requirement that we do that. It's not an option at this point in time. So even if we wanted to, we have to apply for the DARA, even if we wanted to keep the bus and sell it or use it for other purposes, that's not allowed.
So in keeping with Carl speaking for the public, can you explain what the DARA is? Thank you.
Yeah, so it's a, it's a diesel emissions reduction act. And so, and it's a, it's a grant, and you, and you have, you apply for it, and then the Wyoming, I can't remember the two, I can't remember the two entities that are combined together to give you that, but then, but they give it to you, but only after you've submitted a certificate that shows that the engine has been disabled.
Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
And then I kind of wanted to get into our reasoning for increasing the teacher bases. So I provided like a little comparison of where we would be just in the county. So at, in the first slide, I mean, you can see us Fremont twenty five, where the base was forty nine two. You can see we want to increase the base was fifty thousand two hundred was the original, but the budget I showed you was the fifty one thousand. Fremont twenty four is going from forty seven thousand, they told me to fifty one or fifty two, they hadn't decided yet, the last time I talked to them. Fremont six pavilion is going from fifty three six to fifty four thousand one hundred and thirty six. Fremont one lander is going from forty nine thousand eight hundred and seventy five to fifty two two. So we felt like that it was really important to try to focus on the wages, and that's why we are to decrease some of the non-labor budgets and why we're making cuts there, because we just thought that was important to give back to our teachers and, and to stay competitive. Is there any questions on that one before I continue? Another thing where I thought we were kind of lacking was the, the bus driver wages, which a lot of that is reimbursable, so I'm not sure why we got so far behind, because most of it is. But you can see where we were at twenty dollars an hour, but we did have thirty two cent increase. And so as our bus drivers got more experienced, the, the gap narrowed, but it was just the beginning that was really off, and so we were kind of struggling hiring some, especially if there was competing bus drivers between the districts. So in the first column, you can see twenty, we're proposing twenty three with, and we did lower the step increase to twenty five cents. But you can see that puts us pretty comparable, a little bit more than lander, even with Shisone and still under Wind River, but we felt like that was competitive, that we can, at least if there was someone that was deciding with, between the two districts, that we at least had a case. And that is it. Do you guys have any more questions, concerns? Like, I kind of know I went over it a little fast.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I, motion that we close the hearing and reconvene into regular open session.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we closed the budget hearing and we're reopening in regular session. Do we have any discussion of the, oh, we had to vote, right?
No, we should have been out there.
We should have been out there.
You guys need, you need like hats and like.
You did a good job though.
Voices.
Well, I tried to throw my voice, but I don't think it worked very well.
Yeah, you should have had characters.
Well, when there's nobody here, you're the budget session, you gotta ask questions.
Thank you for your work on this, Colton.
Yes, it really was great.
Good job.
Yeah, thank you, Colton, and thanks for the explanations.
I, I do want to, of the, the first budget one, I do, I do want to apologize for being a little bit kind of fumbly there, and most of that was because I was, I was so excited, I want to tell you how much we were putting in reserves, but I didn't want to get that out there just yet, because, just in case something came up last minute. But that's why I was like, man, I want to tell them more, and I, I, I didn't think I should do it right then. So I want to apologize for that. Hopefully I made up for it, being a little bit more focused here.
No, I, I understand your excitement. I'm excited.
I was sort of wondering, what is the number for all the title monies that we are losing?
Yes.
Oh, so it was on, it's about five hundred and seventy thousand or so, approximately.
It's over. I changed, where are my slides?
Well, we're not sure that we're losing it, we're just not sure.
So it's, it's listed as a five, five hundred.
I've talked to is saying that.
Five hundred and seventy thousand?
That we're not going to get it, right?
That's the number that's on the slide.
Yep.
Five hundred and seventy thousand, it's on the slide here.
That's, we're kind of assuming that we're not going to get it, so.
But the plan is not.
Yeah, and that's.
Prepare to be happily surprised when we do.
That's true. Prepare for the worst, you know?
It's the other way around.
Yes.
And we can celebrate if it goes the other direction, hope for, yeah, that's right.
Does anybody have any discussion or questions about the budget?
Yeah, we asked those while we had our public hat on.
Yeah, our public hats were on, but.
That's fine, it's good to, to do it at the time when you're talking about it, because, you know, when you try to come back to it, it's like, well, heck, I don't.
Well, that's when you really wish that those seats were full out here, because, you know, you get those questions.
There's only been Mike McDonald, and those were the three years after he left being a school board member. So that was in the early nineties.
Came to the budget meeting.
Came to the budget meeting.
One year, we had one.
Wasn't here for that.
Yeah, one or two late, people would have been here.
Yeah, but.
Everybody wants to talk about it after we're done.
Yeah, they will. Absolutely, and they still will.
Okay, so we're done with the budget? Done with, no questions?
Yep.
No comments? Come on, I need some comments.
I think it's a great job.
Yeah, I just appreciate Colton and Jody putting it together.
Oh, heck, yeah.
Presenting it, and Colton did it, and that great, was easy, accessible, so thank you.
Yep, I, I like the simplification of the slides.
Yeah.
For an individual such as myself, because I don't look at that all the time, and so it was very understandable. I also wanted to applaud you both for looking into the, the bus wages and, and trying to get that where it needed to be as well as the base salary. I know that sometimes you, you don't hear the accolades for the work that it takes in order to make those kind of things happen, and I think that I want to, want to make sure that you're appreciated for that. So thank you.
And being competitive.
Right.
Yeah.
That's a, that's a big thing.
Yeah, making up steps for our teachers.
Be competitive.
I think our teachers will be very thankful for steps.
I do.
And there's a lot of conversation right now about, because of the, the recalibration committee.
Right.
And some of the comments that have been made there about how uncompetitive we are becoming with Colorado and Utah.
Yep.
That the pressure from what they are paying their teachers, especially in the front range, is much higher than what we pay.
Right.
Yeah, but then they got to live in Colorado, so it's kind of a little.
They can live in the same commute from Cheyenne and Maroon, so.
And they still probably can't afford a house down there.
No.
They can't afford it. They can't afford it in Cheyenne and.
No, neither place.
Well, and not necessarily, I don't need to know about this tonight, but with the special, special education reimbursable, where we're not doing the out-of-district placements, it'd just be nice to know, what are we doing to support those kids? You know, that before, we felt like we needed to do an out-of-district placement and now we are being able to provide them with more support in, in district.
Yes, so we are enhancing our in-district supports and we are, um, exhausting those before moving to an out-of-district placement. Um, and we'll have more information on that and we can present that. I can ask Katrina and Courtney to come.
That'd be great.
Our behavior plans and our behavior programs. Also, just the joint education committee is really working on student discipline and that, and that will have a hand in it as well. Um, because we need to be able to have some ability to change a student's placement within the school based on their behavior, um, so as not to disrupt the rest of the students without it having to be a placement. And so we're having a lot of conversations about that and have, have worked through that and that will be a focus this year.
That'd be great. Thank you, Jody.
You bet.
Spend a lot of money in district.
Yes, we can.
For what it costs to send one kid out of district.
I totally agree. Yep, absolutely.
You know, and that's something that we're, I think, that's a direction we're headed, right?
Um, that is a direction we would like to go with Jackson School and with our Step Up Day School and some of those programs. We'd like to enhance those.
Are any of our compliance issues tied to it?
Um, our, yes, wha- what, our very first cap, we were on because of our number of out-of-district placements. And so, um, they were encouraging us not to go out of district as fast. So that was our first cap and then our.
You're addressing that cap.
And we're addressing that one. And in fact, that one, we're off of that one now, but the new one came, which we talked about in that work session. Um, and we'll be addressing those and Katrina and Courtney are working really hard and they'll work really hard with the staff and they'll have, um, central office support to make sure that we're.
WDE have expert help?
They do, and they have offered to provide that expert help for us. Um, and I'm sure that for some of those items, we will take it and for others, we know that, we know what we need to do.
Thank you.
Some of the stuff was just, we've always done it this way and then it just kept going that way and, and we didn't know it was wrong, right?
Correct.
And it's just a matter of changing how we do it, which we're.
Compliance is always a pain.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, so let's move on to roundtable. Um, we're gonna start with Jody this time, not this Jody, that Jody.
Okay, great. So.
Oh, Jody, okay.
Yeah, me, Jody.
Me, Jody. The Jody with an I.
Jody, I.
Jody, I. Jody, I.
So, um, I shared out with you the, uh, Tonkin, what we would need to be, need to do that Ally put up for us, um, if we, to move forward with the Tonkin ma- monument. Um, I'm wondering if there's anybody on the board that has an interest or if we need to open it up to the public and how you would like to go about that, to get that out there so that we could have people express interest. We do know that Karen Wardner has expressed interest. She's emailed a board member, I believe, and also came to one of the board meetings. So however you want, you know, to proceed with that, if there, if one of you wants to take that project on, if you want us to ask Karen, if you want us to publicly make an offer of who's interested and have them do some sort of application to show their intent and interest. Um, I'm just looking for guidance from you on that.
I think it would behoove us to open it to the public and take applications.
Yeah. You think there should be one board member on it?
That's what I was learning, to be like a liaison to that person, to the board.
Probably wouldn't hurt.
You're volunteering, Carl?
No, no. I do not need one more thing on my plate right now, I'm sorry.
In the current bylaws or current articles in incorporation that aren't actually current, because they've. They've been extinguished, um, but we could resubmit those. But the, back then, there were board members on it, but it did also provide for the superintendent and for the chair to act as ex officio members. So they were on the board, but they didn't have bo- voting power.
I like that.
If you wanna still do that, that's not, it's already written in there. If you don't wanna do it, you can change it.
I don't mind doing that. That would, that would be fine.
A non-voting member, just a.
I don't know that you need another thing to do.
No, I would rather not, if possible.
We need to designate that they are ex officio, non-voting, cause I serve on another board.
Yes.
Ex officio just means by the ti- you're there because you're in the position you're in. It doesn't necessarily mean you don't get to vote.
Yeah, it says in the.
It does say ex officio.
Yeah, it does. It makes that clear.
And could that be just rather than the, if, if we wanted to, if you're gonna, the superintendent could, would not have to, would not have to.
She doesn't have to.
Okay.
Change that, yeah. It's just how they used to do it.
Okay.
Well, and, and.
Good idea.
The chair, by the time this all gets going, I probably won't be chair anymore, so, you know, I'm kinda.
We're gonna get it done by the end of the.
Kind of volunteer. No, I don't think that they're gonna even get started by the end of the.
Well, could we say like board chair or designate, so that if you are involved in it and you have that expert knowledge, you could stay.
We can do that, yes. Yeah, we need to get, without community support, it's not gonna go anywhere.
No, and it needs to have the community behind it.
We need to get the community.
That's where the push needs to happen.
Something goes in newspapers. So can we put it like on, I don't know, our website? And putting it in the paper, I, I don't know if that's efficient or not.
It's just, it's just that it is our.
It's official, right. Okay.
Our official.
I guess we'll run an ad in the paper.
And then put it on our website.
And put it on the website.
Front door, too.
So we're gonna have applications sent to here and then Bruce can go through them.
Oh, and, and do the interviews.
I would be happy to help you with that process.
Go through the applications. I don't, I frankly, I don't think there's gonna be that many applications.
Well, you never know. There could be.
You're right. I don't know.
You know, I mean, there could be an onslaught and I would help that process.
One of the many things I don't.
So we could, once we get the applications, we could reach out and set up a, a work session to go over. Does it, would that be something that we would do in public?
I think so.
I would think so.
I think so.
Okay, so, and that, um, we can get that process started. So I think, I think we have enough information to move forward with that, don't you, Jada?
Yes.
You have enough information to?
That could be like an hour before the meeting or something.
I wanna talk to you guys about how you wanna do it, um, and whoever is interested before I work on the paperwork.
Let's not get into the paperwork yet.
I have the skeleton of it. Like, I have a really good start. It's just there are a few things that I think should be changed just logistically. Like, for instance, the superintendent being an ex officio member. So, um, if you want, you know, we could talk about it at that work session. I could, I could be here, take notes.
When we're talking about the p- the applicants.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. I think we need to see what, what kinda response we get before we put a lot of effort into.
Cause we need to clarify.
Paperwork.
And we need somebody to be designated as an incorporator, who's gonna file this paperwork with the Secretary of State. And at that point, you know, I'll have it all prepared, but I need to know what they wanna do first.
Okay.
Yeah, so we'll, yeah.
Good enough.
So that will be that same person? The incorporator will be the same person?
Yeah, and if you, you have a board chosen at that time as well, you could have, you know, it be the incorporator as well. Like, you could have a c- couple of incorporators. It doesn't just need to be one person. Um, sometimes what we do is, if you don't have a board elected, you have like one person be the incorporator and then at the first regularly scheduled board meeting, that's when you elect the board of directors. But it's, we need to know who's interested, because otherwise we'd have nobody there to elect as the board directors.
If nobody.
Yeah.
That's right. Then there's no need to.
If you show up.
Yeah, if you show up, you're the.
So we need five?
We don't, no, it's, from what I could tell, it was a minimum of three, according to the statute, the nonprofit statute. So you don't need, you don't need five. It just.
If five.
We do need three.
Yes, I think five would be ideal, but if five can't be found, the minimum's three.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, perfect. Um, the next thing I wanted to talk to you about is the vision mission, um, that we talked about at our work session and I sent it out, I think I sent it out to you again, um, with more revisions. Like, because we had made some at the work session of talking about ideas. And then I, um, sent it again, like, last week or earlier, the week before. At any rate, I'd like to know what you want our process to be with that. If you want to have a process, if you just want to have one more work session, if you want it to be a, it, we are changing it so minimally. The content is all still the same. It's just worded a little bit differently and we added values. So.
Oh, yeah.
Um, if you'd like me to share it with our, our district leadership team and get their input on the new wording, because they were part of the reason that we thought we needed to reword it, because they were confused by some of the language and thought that it wasn't as clear as it could be. Um, just would like some guidance on that, because I, I would like to pursue updating.
Well, I think that we probably need to run it by them.
I do too.
That was what, that was kinda the impetus behind this.
Like there wasn't that, there was a disconnect.
Mm-hmm.
And so I think that maybe they do, that it'd be important that they take a look at this and see whether or not what, what we would have suggested here or where we're at with this fills that need and, and re- and, and gives a connection that, that is, is better.
Okay.
So.
All right, so I will do that. We have a meeting on July twenty-ninth. So potentially at the next board meeting, I could have something for you and you could, um, have discussion during an action item or something to, to clarify.
Okay.
Okay, um, I wanted just to explain to you the, a couple of things that are, that are going to be coming up. Um, so the approved district job titles, um, just so you know, that is, continues to be a revolving document. At this time, those are our expected job titles. We have had a couple, um, resignations and changes and we haven't filled those positions yet. We've, we do believe that we have, um, job descriptions for central office that make sense now and that the duties are, um, put out to where if somebody does leave, it is a position that you can advertise and somebody with those skill sets and aptitudes could step into it without having to do a lot of extraneous training if they already are skilled in there. So, um, you'll notice in there that we changed Tiffany Hannah Wertham's, um, job title. And, um, in addition, we moved her to a, um, different pay scale. It is going to be just a little bit different than what she was supposed to be. Um, she was misplaced, um, by eight steps, um, for her experience. And so it's gonna be just a little bit different, but it's the scale that fits the best. Um, we are moving, uh, Roy's title. We've changed it to Native American Education and Federal Programs Director. Um, so that job combines really well and makes sense. The person in there is in charge of all the grants and all of the things that come in. Um, the, we changed here at Central Office, um, we have, I don't, I don't remember the exact titles. Uh, shoot, I should've wrote them down. The, um, in our HR department and then in our, um, our secretary that was assistant to the assistant superintendent, where, um, depending on the person that we get, will be Federal Programs and Curriculum Support Secretary. So we'll be supporting both Roy and Christina in that role, because previously that role, um, was a very large role and did support the assistant superintendent. And we changed Christina's job description, um, but we have talked about to set her up for that support. We've changed that like two years ago or whatever.
Curriculum engagement and federal program.
Yeah, curriculum.
Okay, thank you. I didn't know the exact title, but I knew it was going to be for both of those. Um, so, so we've done some adjustments there. And then, um, so just so you know, that, that still, um, is a work in progress and some of those job descriptions are a work in progress. And we've been reviewing them, like, for instance, yesterday I met with transportation and we talked about, do these job descriptions really match what you're doing in your position, because we feel like it's important. The other thing we're doing is saying, do the tasks of this job description and the responsibilities meet where this position is being paid?
Right.
Because we're transitioning, in some cases, in, in some cases, we've had a previous history of paying the person and not the position, but we need to pay the position. So this is, this is the work that you do. This is what you get paid. Um, so those things happen. So you will see that we uploaded a new salary schedule today. Um, and the majority, well, the changes from that that are different from the one that was uploaded before is the eighteen hundred dollar base increase rather than a thousand dollar base increase. But you'll also notice in there that there are some comments across it. And as we continue to, um, hire, um, for positions and and reorganize, we'll be putting maybe some changes in front of you that make the amount of wage fit the job itself. Um, so that is all I wanted to talk to you about.
One question.
Okay.
The, uh, air conditioning, what happened with that?
Okay, so I sent out a message to you all about the air conditioning.
Yeah.
So, um, we, it, it, how high of a priority is it? And do you want us to add that? Because we do have room that we could.
And you said it was like forty-eight thousand?
Yeah, it's like thirty to forty thousand per unit.
Well, if you've ever spent four hours in the hot sun, that's not us.
Well, I think, now, are we talking about just the activity bus?
That would, that would have to be, I would, I would believe that we would do it for buses that are on long trips, uh, and probably start with one or two.
That's what I would suggest. I, I would feel comfortable with, I think, you know, I mean, for long trips, if it's.
Do we have?
Do we have that?
We have available, is that money that we can spend?
So, I mean, it is when you look at how much we have left over. But the, the thing is, I think that that would come through and it would be an action item for you to approve or not approve, because it's so expensive.
So we can make, you know.
We did not put it in this budget.
We did not, and we are mostly through the summer, so if you guys want something, we could just, uh, put on our item for, for next year and so we can see how the budget's looking, maybe halfway through the year, towards the end of the year, and we can maybe make that, that, that call then for the next summer, if that's.
Was the retrofit actually lower priced?
Not, not much, but yes.
Yeah.
Twenty-eight to thirty.
That seems kinda weird, doesn't it? So, do we have any indication of how long the bus would be down to retrofit a bus?
I did, I did not ask that question. Nope, I just got the cost.
So we'd wanna do it like when we didn't need the bus, right?
Right.
Like over Christmas break? We had funds?
And actually, I've seen them and they fit right in. They're not a big deal.
Not a lot of downtime.
We're the only one around here that doesn't have one.
Well, okay, in my opinion, I think we need to have, at least on the, the buses that go long trips. Um, which, I don't know, how many buses is that? One, two? You're kinda the bus expert.
Two, uh, is, is sufficient, I think. And, uh, yeah, they're, uh, Shoshone has one, Pavilion has one.
Swimming.
The band.
Band.
So we try to, we try to not have all the sports out on the same weekend. So we have home events versus, so probably there's two traveling every weekend. Um, because if we had everybody traveling, we wouldn't be able to cover the transportation needs and sorts of things, so. Um, so I, we'll get more information on that and we can revisit it as the year progresses.
Okay.
Um, if, and if we wanna make it a priority, it just will lower that one point four million that we're planning to one point three.
One point three, okay.
So.
And then, yeah, if you can get more information for us, so we can then maybe put it as an action item next meeting or?
Okay.
Thank you.
I'll get with Tracy on that and have him come and present to you what that would entail.
Okay.
Be good.
Be nice to, yeah, to hear from him, because he could maybe go, yeah, this isn't as simple as you think it is.
Okay.
But we would like to know that.
Yeah, and he did get the prices for us, so.
Okay.
All right, all right. That's all I have.
That's all you have?
That's all I have.
That was easy. Jada, do you have anything?
I do not. Thank you, Bruce.
Colton, do you have anything else?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay, Terry?
Nope, I'm good.
Nothing?
Nothing.
Terry, two?
Nothing.
I'll have you, Terry, three. So, um, our new director, Jackie Fran- our Jackie Franzen has started. She's off and running. Um, she sent us a do- or a little note out the other day. She's going through documents, cleaning out stuff that's been there. Um, they found some dating back to nineteen seventy. Um, they found some dating back to nineteen seventy. So some of those documents are uh, going in the shred tub. But um, there, she's doing a really good job working through there. Um, Carolyn's adjusting to her retirement. Um, we will have our annual Northwest BOCs um, picnic will be in August at that meeting, so I'll get you the final date and the time. At our next meeting, because it'll be the fourth Wednesday in August, but you guys are welcome to come inter mop. Um, if you want to go, I just need to know so I can make sure we let them know for dinner. Because we always. Jada, any of you are welcome to go as well. Um, and the kids, the kids that are on their top levels will give us a tour of their.
It's pretty cool.
Of the cottages and then we'll take a tour of the school and have our meeting, so.
I really enjoyed it.
Yeah, that was a lot of fun.
It is fun. So that's all I have. Oh, and fair is coming up.
I don't know, that's a good thing. I think fair.
Congratulations, no, I wanted to congratulate our two FCC. Students who placed in the top five in the nation. That's really awesome.
That is way awesome.
So that's the other thing I thought, oh, I meant to say that.
Cool, I'm glad that you mentioned that.
They'll be coming August twenty sixth.
Excellent.
Alright, that's really cool.
Rory?
I don't have anything.
It's summertime.
I know you got something.
I do, I wanna thank the district for and the bus drivers who were at South Pass City Days because I actually utilized the bus. Because we, my grandsons came up and we spent the, they spent the weekend up there and so you park up top and then you get to ride the buses down. And it was nice to hear the comments and there were people from all over, not just Wyoming, but all over. Who utilized that and wanted to know how thi- this came about, that the school district, I suppose that's just a courtesy that the school district does. And our bus drivers were awesome, so I wanted to thank them for that. Um, all class reunion stuff is coming up this. This weekend and um, my husband's old, his fiftieth is this. This weekend too. Um, for all class reunion, they're, they're doing a couple of things. They will Friday night kickoff. Down for a cornhole tournament and things like that. And then also, um, I wanted to. Um, and then on Saturday, they'll do the, the drill station, they'll have a dinner if you've registered. They're offering two excursions and the district is help helping with transportation for that as well. Um, one will go take uh, a busload of whoever's signed up to go up to see the Military Museum. And they can go up there and they'll do that and um, then there's uh. I think the other one is not being bused. I think it's just people are gonna meet at Bruce's campground to. To hike the sinks if that's what they so choose. Um, but anyway, outside of that, um. And the fact that reality's coming fast now that my, I've got a grandson who's gonna be a senior this year. Uh, well, actually multiples because Terry and I share a grandson. And so, yeah, we have multiples that are, that are ju- gonna jump up there and I have one that's a freshman and. He's been working his tail off going to open gym and I wanna thank all, all the uh, individuals involved in that. Because that's been really good for them, the kids to get out, but that's it.
Talking about open gym, I saw my granddaughter who's doing volleyball, high school volleyball. Middle school, boom boom, then she does the weight training. Then she has some time off. And then, then doing soccer practice, high school soccer practice in the evenings. Her soccer practice is ending and and volleyball is ending this week too, but she's been doing it all summer.
And get up at the. On and get there and.
It's amazing what these kids. Can do, yeah, but uh, I saw it uh, when I was buying grow trees. How you doing this year?
I saw her.
Other than that, uh, so it's great that we have things going on for the kids. You know, some of that title money was designed for uh, summer projects and whatnot. I don't know how much we utilized it. But a lot of schools are really s- hit by the uh, after school and. Uh, summer programs that get, got hit by that uh, not, not making it yet. The states. Now, we did have our summer directors meeting for Wyoming School Board Association. Uh, it's our joint meeting with uh, Wassa, so we had the uh. Board of Directors for the superintendents there with us in the evening and. In the morning uh, in Saratoga, so. It was interesting to hear superintendents talk about title and guns and. All the different things that we're talking about too and the uh, amount of. Uh, we're not gonna do a thing for guns or we're going to, what, what do we do with lock boxes and? I mean, there were, and then s- uh, homeschooling, you know, whether you are a. Designated school and if, if there, there was, I guess, some superintendents went to some. Learning from the WDE who told them if a kid is in. A getting uh, money from the seven thousand dollars or, you know, even the one previously. If they wanna take a class. At, you know, like a higher math or some other class band, we used to be able to do it two sevens. You know, if they were taking two classes and get ADM from them. Now, if they're getting some kind of voucher dollars, you can't do that. And so some superintendents are actually starting to do background checks on students to see. So it, this is sort of future C, if, if that seven thousand dollars were to. You know, you don't know where they're coming from and if they are getting any of these dollars. And it, there's a whole bunch of issues with this voucher and. Interaction and whether. You know, like if a credit was given at homeschool.
Is it equivalent to?
Sorta. But it, the transcript would not be, you would not be able to put it into the district transcript. So that it, you know, for colleges, you know, it, so that, that, there's all these nuances that. These guys were talking, arguing about, you know, uh, it was, it was fun to listen to. Uh, the, we're going to propose a new set of uh. It's not much different than what we've done before, but the, what, what our proposed. Uh, what do we call it? The advocacy agenda. Uh, it's going to be done a little bit differently so that it's easier read and makes a little bit more sense. So you'll be seeing that. We're going to add a s- possibly a secret. Board Secretary Award. So that we can nominate the forty eight. Members that uh, do our boards and do our work and then one is picked. And I would imagine the first year that all forty eight would nominate their board secretary. I know. But, but, you know, so that's a new award that we're talking about. The uh, the fall sessions, we're in August, the last week of August, I believe. Uh, for uh, the uh, fall roundup with Brian and. And uh, all the counties and it's going to be here again. Trying to think of anything else that I should bring up about that. I do, and. Terry? I have two plaques for you. But I, they're in my car, so I'm gonna congratulate you and then I'll give you the plaques later for education. For doing all the work and going to the classes and getting uh, different points.
That's it. I did get the, the little announcement that came out with regards to the tour for the auditorium and things like that. And that if you were a former person who was involved in theater, whatever. To, to a thespian or whatever, that they could fill that out and I encouraged my husband to do that because he did a lot of that. As a matter of fact, Randy Lehman showed up yesterday and gave me a picture of him getting his makeup done for. I think it was Paint Your Wagon or something like that for the high school. But I did encourage him to, to do that and I'm excited about that. Went up and walked the stairs. I do that every now and then through the summer. And it let, when this all started with the auditorium, I had snapped pictures and I got up there and I stood at the top. And I can't tell you how beautiful. That building is and how awesome it is to see, I mean, all of the sod was down there, they have the. The plants, the little sweet grass and the flowers and, oh my gosh, took my breath away, made me so excited. And I'm just so proud of our district and this board for seeing that vision through. It was an awesome, awesome thing and I, I forgot to say that and I meant to, so thanks for letting me jump in.
Okay, Christina.
You're not going to a concert?
No, I'm not.
Yeah, we have um, a couple of things for me. Uh, unfortunately, though Title Two and Title Four are officially on pause for the foreseeable future. We did receive uh, our allocation of Title Six. So we have official uh, grant award notification that will receive those funds, so that's on the agenda for you. Uh, to consider accepting for tonight's meeting. Uh, so part of, just a little update on Title Six, part of the process uh, in order to submit the application is to do a public hearing and gather inputs. Uh, and so a lot of our parents and our students um, and staff wanted to focus more on professional development. Um, particularly working with students uh, who come from Native American backgrounds. So last summer I did a, a session for teachers. I'll continue to do that again. Um, but WD is having a conference in the first part of August called Teacher Con. It's supported by the superintendent um, as part of her initiatives to, to bolster professional development coming from the department. Uh, this is the inaugural conference. Her plan is to do it every, every other year.
And when, when is that?
It's August uh, seventh and eighth. But uh, because our focus under Title Six is uh, going to be professional developments, I reached out. Um, and was invited to present at the conference.
How good for you.
Indigenous, uh, uh, educating indigenous students is, is what we're calling the, the presentation, so. Thankful to be doing that.
Yeah, can we attend?
Um, I, I, I know there's a registration fee. My registration is supported through WD, so I don't, I don't know the streaming or. But um, it will largely be similar to the presentations I do here for our staff, so. Um, if you aren't able to make the one in August, we'll be doing some in-service, uh, presentations during in-service and I can invite you to that as well.
I would love that.
That you for you? Ally?
Nothing, thank you.
Nothing, okay. Well, I have stuff a little bit, but it doesn't really pertain to the school. Other than the fact that we kinda hold up our school district as being the center of our community. And we have two things, the Tour de Wyoming stopped here. You might have seen the bikes.
I was wondering what that was.
Yeah, I've, I've ridden that several times. Um, and basically it's a week-long deal where you ride from one town to the next town and you stay overnight. Um, you know, either outside in a tent or in the gymnasium and then you get to use the showers and stuff. And uh, I really was glad to see that we had that. You know, that the middle school was opened up for those people here.
That's really cool.
Makes a, you know.
I'm glad you said something. I was gonna ask about that. Thank you, Bruce.
A lot of people, you know, get to see that, they get to see our building. Um, and there's probably half of the, oh, more than half. Anyway, a large percentage of those riders are from Ohio State.
Yeah, they are, because I went through the parking lot today and there were people from Utah, um, Colorado, Nebraska, California. I was trying, you know, as I walked through, that's what I noticed.
That ride fills up in about an hour every year.
Yeah, that's, that's pretty cool. I'm glad, I was gonna ask.
How long we've been doing it, but it's, it started with uh, Key Club and the Kiwanis sponsoring uh. And we, and Terry Snyder was the superintendent at the time and he opened up the uh, at that time it was the high school.
And we gotta give special thanks to the custodians because, man, I'm sure there was a bunch of work on, you know. Bunch of sweaty bikers in there using the showers.
But you know, I have to tell you that in walking through the parking lot, I didn't see a lot of discarded anything. It was, the parking lots were pristine. The vehicles were parked there, they're very responsible.
Pretty good about that, I mean, you know. Um, and the route changes every year, so you know, it might be several years before it gets back to Riverton again, but it has come through here.
Yeah, that's pretty cool.
A few times. And then baseball, uh, not a school sport, but the, the Legion kids just played in Evanston. And they won two games there and qualified for state.
I was gonna mention that, my grandson plays on that team, so.
Yeah, they did.
I've watched him. And uh, so they go to Sheridan for, for baseball. And I didn't have no idea that this was even a deal, but Sheridan has turf on their baseball diamond.
Yeah, they do, they have a very nice facility up there.
That's what they said, and.
If you've not been, it's, it's, if you're in Sheridan sometime, go check it out, it's pretty nice.
And I know all this because I live next door to the baseball heroes, so.
Yeah, no, that's really cool. My, in, in speaking of that, they had the um. Actually, the fourteen-year-olds or the ju- would be Babe, Babe Ruth kids went and they ended up. Uh, fin- they ended up finishing out second. They ran the oddest bracket I've ever seen in my life. And I've watched a lot of baseball, but our kids did very, very well and when they were faced with some adversity. Um, with regards to how they were being treated due to ethnicity and things like that, they faced that very head-on and they, they. And they were very well-supported by the, by the commissioner there too. But they, they did that with, it ma- made me proud that um, our kids went up there and they handled that situation. My husband volunteers and, and helps with that team he has for two years. Um, and he really did enjoy that, so there's that. It's, it's growing again a little bit, so it's neat to see that. And then Lander's team went. They, and then we.
You know, they, they actually.
We don't talk about Lander.
Well, I have, I have some kids that go both sides.
Don't, don't denigrate yourself by talking about Lander.
There's some Lander kids I love.
There are.
Some Riverton kids play for Lander, so.
That's right, that's exactly right. And some of those Lander kids play other sports for us.
Okay, um, so any, we have no visitors. You guys got anything you wanna say? Come on.
They just wanna say, could you get this meeting?
Okay, so uh, we have an appointment. Roy Brown is being appointed as the Federal Programs Grant and. Is that what it is? Okay, so congratulations, Roy. We'll see if we can't find some other jobs for you to do along the way.
Interviews for talking.
Yeah, there you go. Um, so let's move on to action items. Uh, consider an administrative recommendation to take action on levy mills.
Mister Chair, I would move the board um, approve three-quarter mill for the BOCs with one half mill going to Fremont County BOCs. And one fourth mill going to Northwest BOCs and one mill for the Fremont County School District, twenty-five Recreation District.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? That passes. Consider an administrative recommendation to authorize the board to request to assess twenty-five mills.
Mister Chair, I move the board authorize the administration to request the assessment of the twenty-five mills for local support.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Good, we're funded for the next year. Consider an administrative recommendation to adopt the budget for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
Mister Chair, I would move the board adopt the budget for the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six school year as presented.
As presented by Colton.
And including the amended, so it's the second one that was uploaded.
Yes, within, yeah, and.
Changes.
Yeah, with the change.
And any discussion other than? And any discussion other than that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we'll adopt that budget. Could consider an administrative recommendation to approve the Fremont County Bosse's amended services agreement.
Mister Chair, I move the board approve the amended Fremont County Bosse's cooperative education service agreement. Including services for exceptional and at-risk students.
Second.
And any discussion?
Just to mention that this came from our district. And uh, we discussed it at our previous meeting. We tabled it so that the other uh, boards could hear about it. And then we passed it at this last one. It's just a slight change. Adding basically those words and putting in the record that we do also. Early childhood. No, no board, the, the Bosse's, the state. Uh, the two agencies that the, that take care of Bosse's uh, documents and approvals. None of them had our agreements in file. Uh, I mean, we looked at all the boards, our board, uh, our, you know, we, Jada looked, I'm sure Jody looked. Uh, you know, Wind River, Lander, Dubois, nobody had the agreements, uh, so.
So we don't really know what the agreement is.
Oh, that's the problem. I'm, I'm not gonna go there very deep, but uh, it, it. So now it's, you know, I hope that somebody archives them better than.
Moving forward.
Moving forward, yes.
No, that would be helpful.
I got it. I'm on it. I'm timed.
So, did we vote on that? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we'll adopt that. Consider an administrative recommendation to reserve the right to withdraw front, funds from Bosse's.
Mister Chair, I move the board give Fremont County Bosse's notice of our intention to. Reserve the right to withdraw funding in school year twenty-six, twenty-seven.
Second.
Any discussion?
This is a ongoing thing, uh, that if you don't do it, you can't do it.
So if something should happen and we.
If we don't vote on it, we can't, you can't do it.
It's, it's in the bylaws basically that you have to give a year's notice, so. I think the first time it was activated was the Lander Board. Bill Budd was the chair that year and Bill's s- said, we're gonna do this and then most other boards have followed suit, so. It's just, we've done it for years.
Yeah, and nobody's ever.
Nobody's.
We don't ever say, no, we're not gonna give you money.
No, it's just reserving that right.
Right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we will reserve that right. Um, consider an administrative recommendation to approve district job titles, salary schedule, and steps.
Mister Chair, I move the board approve the updated job titles and sal- salary schedule. For the twenty-five, twenty-six school year and an increase of one step to each returning employee.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we'll adopt that salary schedule and job titles. Uh, concern, consider an administrative recommendation to adopt. To approve student and parent handbooks and activity handbooks.
Mi- uh, Mister Chair, I would move the board approve the Riverton High School Student and Parent Handbook. The Riverton Middle School Student and Parent Handbook, the Riverton Middle School Activity slash Athletics Handbook. The Elementary School Student and Parent Handbook for the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six school year as presented.
Second.
So the elementary.
I haven't called for a discussion yet.
I'm sorry, I have a question.
Discussion?
I'm sorry. I'm just got, I've just got thinking as I read it. You know, I know in the years past and everything, we have, we've had each of the elementary schools that have come in and done separate ones.
But now.
Two or three years they've done.
They've done, they've done this though, right? That's what I thought, but I was like, yeah, and I, I thought that, but then I thought, well, maybe I. Paused my brain on some situation, but thank you for the clarification.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we'll approve those handbooks. Consider an administrative recommendation to approve inter-district transportation.
Mister Chair, I recommend the board approve, I move the board approve the inter-district transportation. With Fremont County School Districts number one, two, six, fourteen, twenty-four, and thirty-eight.
Second.
Is that a discussion?
Yeah, you know.
Limit them to one bus.
Yeah, I mean, you know, there's, there's, there's a little abuse, I think.
Do we really wanna go there?
I don't know.
Getting in the weeds.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we'll adopt that policy. Consider an administrative recommendation to approve a change order.
Mister Chair, I would move the board approve change order number eighteen with Sampson Construction Company, Inc. In the amount of three thousand nine hundred sixty-three dollars, ninety-six cents for the minimum ordering requirements for ceiling tile. In the lobby for the Riverton High School Auditorium Project.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we'll approve that change order. Consider an administrative recommendation to approve a contingency order.
Mister Chair, I would move the board approve contingency order number seven with Sampson Construction Company, Inc. In the amount of two thousand eight hundred ninety dollars, no cents. For the added signage per code official for the Riverton High School Auditorium Project.
Second.
Uh, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we will approve that. Consider an administrative recommendation to award a bid.
Mister Chair, I would move the board award the bid for the Central Administration Office Re-Roof Project. To Dave Loden Construction, Inc. of Buffalo, Wyoming. In the bid amount of five hundred and forty-eight thousand, eight hundred and eighty-five dollars.
Second.
My discussion is, that seems like a lot.
Did somebody second?
Yes.
Okay, I did.
I don't know, I just did the roof on our office and it was twenty-four thousand.
Okay, you got me there.
I know.
Membrane.
Is it a membrane roof they're putting on?
Do they have to redo the drainage drains?
And they're also uh, reconfiguring some of the drainage out there so it drains better. They'll put the plumbing on the roof and the pre-saw cycle, uh, working against a membrane and seams and stuff on there.
Don't have a mosquito farm.
Uh, it's valleys is what they're putting in. Uh, little deeper valleys to lead to the drains to drain off and stuff, so roof will drain better.
I know that that, that is probably, I mean, it's obviously the right price, but damn, it seems like a lot of money.
It, it's a lot of money for the roof.
It isn't.
And if you do it halfway.
Yeah.
And you're gonna pay.
Ends up costing more.
Flat roofs are so much fun. There's one building down on, on Broadway that actually put a peak roof on there.
Just so they didn't have to deal with it.
Yes, yes, uh, drainage is a big issue on a flat roof and getting that to run off of there. And that's where a lot of this expense is coming.
Air conditioning guy doing some uh, adjustment, loosening the membrane and then it starts leaking over here.
Well, we have to lift all the units off the roof.
Yeah.
Do the roof, put all the units back.
Yeah.
There's just a lot involved on this roof.
They are.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ed.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we'll award that bid. Uh, consider an administrative recommendation to abrogate, I love that word, a policy.
Mister Chair, I move the board approve the abrogate policy fifty-eighty-seven, district staff retirement insurance on first reading.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll get rid of that policy. Okay, this one is to consider administrative recommendation to move forward with proposed concealed carry policy. So I need someone.
To re-bolt?
To mo- to move for one of these policies.
Mister Chair, I recommend the board begin, uh, let's see what, I gotta look at this. Nope. I move the board. I move the board begin policy adoption process for policy ten fifty-six firearms personally. Personnel authorized to carry. This will not be formal rulemaking, but aligning policy with current statute.
Second.
Any discussion on this?
It's really a confusing topic.
Yeah. It is.
So are we gonna have problems if we don't do the rulemaking, right?
Not if you, not if you go with the second one, cause you're not changing anything. Right. You're just making is when you're changing somebody, like changing the rights of the public. And under the new law, they could bring concealed carry with their Wyoming permit to school. So, like regardless, but if you were gonna like make them do the training and the notification and all of that. Then yes, you would have to go through rulemaking because you're changing their right now under the statute to conceal carry. And help above them without restrictions.
So the motion that we just made is, is the one that, yeah.
Is not making the rule.
Is not making the rule. I just wanted to make that clear to the public.
We ended up to the forty-five day wait.
They're just like the public.
Right.
Yeah.
And we're just adhering to the.
The statute.
Statute.
And if we don't require training for concealed carry, that's not gonna add additional liability to us, to the district?
Well, I mean, we talked about that in executive session and I think you know what my advice is. I don't really wanna talk about it here in open session, if you want me to reiterate it. Uh, yeah, just let me know if we could go in e-session, but you know what I said.
Right.
Okay, so we're voting to approve mo- the motion that Terry made.
The second motion, I, yep, that I moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we're gonna do the, the second option. Which is basically nothing. Um, consider an administrative recommendation to accept resignations.
Mister Chair, I would move the board accept the resignations of Ken Borst. As a Riverton Middle School Nurse effective July first, twenty-twenty-five. And April Oss- Ossween as the, and Aspen Elementary Ideal Teacher effective immediately.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we'll accept those resignations. And then consider an administrative recommendation to accept a grant.
Mister Chair, I would move the board accept a grant in the, a grant award of two hundred and eighteen thousand, eighty-eight dollars and no cents. For the Title Six Indian Education Grant for the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six school year.
Second.
Any discussion? Good job, Roy.
Yes.
Good job, Roy.
You're already earning your keep. Uh, all of, or all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we'll accept that grant. Why we wouldn't, I don't know. Uh, information items, Saturday, the twenty-sixth of July at ten AM, we have the auditorium dedication ribbon cutting. And at seven PM, the musical presentation, musical review.
So we should be here both of those times? Maybe ten and seven would be good?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's required.
It's okay.
Um, the twenty-twenty-five WSBA Fall Regional Meeting, Wednesday, August twenty-seventh. At five PM, here, right?
Right.
Right.
Registration is now open. Please notify Jada if you would like to attend. I would like to attend. And we have an MOU uh, with the Wyoming Senior Citizens, Inc. For the Foster Grandparents Program and MOU with the Wind River Family and Community Healthcare System. I think that's so that they can bring mobile facilities onsite, right?
Yeah, and also come into the school.
Into the schools, okay.
And it's been something we've been doing for five years.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's been a few years. Revised Policy Five Zero Eight Five, District Staff Fringe Benefits. Revised Policy Five Zero Nine Five, District Staff Short-Term Leaves. Policy Five One One Five, Certified Licensed Professional. And Professional Staff Advertising, Recruiting, and Hiring. Certified Staff Change Transfer of Sarah Gatton-Bine to a Middle School Nurse. And uh, resignation, Classified Staff Resignation, Payroll Clerk Kay Keen. Effective August first of twenty-five, transfers Joshua Mills to a benefit and finance. Benefits and Finance Clerk, Amy Fraser to a Human Resources, Resources Clerk. Job Title Changes Tiffany Hannah Wertham to Finance Systems Coordinator. Roy Brown to a Native American Education and Federal Programs Director. Man, you ain't gotta have a big name tag.
Jada knows where to get those.
New hire Elizabeth Coomer as a Willow Schools, Willow Creek School Secretary. And we have a separation notice and executive content. Anything else?